August the 22nd, and if you would rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome all. Sarah, are we in compliance on FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask for an approval of the agenda with two possible comments here. One is that Senator Davis may join us on one of the items, so to be respectful of his time, we'll take that up when he is here, so that might move around a little bit. And secondly, I think many of you are here for the issue on the high school access, and I think it would be appropriate to have you speak at that time after you heard what the administration's recommendations are as opposed to doing it at our normal public comment. I think that'd be more productive for all of us, so there's no objection on that.
I've got a question right now. Is it possible since all these people are here to move this from the last item up further in the agenda? Is it possible? It's the last, why do they have to insist here for every other?
Yeah, I'd agree with that. Okay. Larry has suggested that it might be of interest to see if we can move that up, and we will do that, so we're not waiting. Is there any folks here for public comment on items other than the high school access regard? Okay, what are the other items, just roughly?
The golf cart.
Golf cart, okay. Okay. And golf cart, okay. That gives us an idea. Okay, so with...
Make a motion then to change the agenda to...
Give us some flexibility? Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, fair enough. So, as amended, there's a motion, there's a second, and is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll consider that approved. We have approval of the minutes from June 22nd, or June 20th?
We need approval of the agenda as amended.
Okay, the approval of the agenda as amended, since we approved the amendment, because it now approved as amended. Thank you, sir.
Second.
Again, seconded, okay. Any objections? Seeing none, it stands approved without objection. June 20th minutes, looking for a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 20th.
Okay, second. Any discussion? Any objection? Seeing none?
Second.
I think, second, I think Paul did.
Paul did.
Okay, that stands approved without objection. So, in the interest of time, let's go ahead and take up the item which is the high school access, which is item number 18, since we have a lot of people here for that. And just as a little bit of background, from my perspective, this has been hanging fire for a period of time. It was suggested that this come forward to public facilities, which we did in June. Out of that meeting, we narrowed down the options to a so-called alternative four and an alternative five, which provided entry into the school complex from more or less the southeast, which is the direction of most of the zone, school zone. And then there was a subsequent meeting last week with the school district, and they had some thoughts on all that. So, I think the next step would be a call on our administrator to give us thoughts on where we go next, and then hopefully focus our discussion.
State county administrator.
Whoever's gonna do it.
Jared.
Oh, Jared's gonna do it. Oh, okay.
I'll work the ass this weekend.
It's faster than you.
I'll get it started, then I'll hand it over to Eric. So, yeah, so where we are on the sales tax program specific to Ladies Island is we're working through the different projects, the access roads and the mainline corridor. Some of the projects are later in the agenda that we'll actually have ready to go out to bid, others are in design, and some are still in preliminary design. What we also did, we separated the corridor, 802 and 21 corridor, from those access roads, and then as we were going through, we actually shifted the design of the high school realignment into that group of projects because it kind of fit a little bit more closely. So, we're trying to figure out what the alternative best looks like. Initially, in 2018 or 19, we held a meeting, we came up with three alternatives. Add the meeting, two more alternatives to the south side of the school were introduced and studied. We came back a few months ago to public facilities and talked through those additional alternatives, and basically one kind of cuts through Hazel, or through the park, Crystal Lake, and connects at Hazel Farm Dirt Road. The other one takes a more southward approach and kind of comes around the bottom of Crystal Lake and connects at Ruta Boy. So, those are the two that we studied. We've since then, since we met last time, we've gone and done some more preliminary engineering design and concepts to take a look at those, as well as we've also coordinated with the school district to get some of their feedback and comments. So, we've softened the two approaches into Hazel Farm and made that where it lines up a little bit more cleanly to Crystal Lake, as well as on the southern side, readjusted the alignment so it doesn't impact as many properties. Every single option that we have impacts somebody or some thing, some stakeholder. There's really not a great option in any scenario. However, one of the options that was discussed more specifically in our school board meeting was that no option, or option zero, as somebody called it. And that is, let's not do any of these, that are cutting through any of these different properties and stakeholders, leave the signal as is. However, what that would do is what we've been moving forward with is the option from the bridge to 802, that that section would be redefined as a more walkable urban downtown feel, and reduced from right now it's a four and three lane section down to a full three lane section with grass strips and walking areas on the side, on both sides. If we were not able to do the access road, this option zero would remain the signal in place and increase that back to a four lane section or a five lane section with turn lanes as needed to facilitate the volume of traffic that's there. Today, in its current state, let alone future design, right now, the volume warrants that it's four lanes today through that section, all the way basically from Meridian to 802. So, option zero is another option that's out there. I'm sure there's a lot of folks that have different opinions, but that's kind of where we are, and maybe Eric, if you want to add to it from there.
So, yeah, we are out of options on this. If we go Meridian, we're gonna upset the people that live along Meridian and the property owners there. If we do something to yeomans, we're gonna upset people that are, that, you know, have an interest in yeomans with the traffic circle, and again, the impacts on Meridian. If we come through by the high school, the school board doesn't like that option, as we met with them last week, and also, a lot of people are here today to probably say, we don't want you to impact Crystal Lake Park. And those two options would definitely impact Crystal Lake Park. So, it's a $12 to $15 million fix for something that's going to alleviate about 2,000 cars a day only off of the Sea Island Parkway when you take out the school traffic that's only twice a day, certain periods of time through the year. So, you all as council have to decide, is it possible to build a four lane section on Sea Island Parkway all the way through to Walmart with medians where appropriate and turn movements where appropriate, and invest the money in that and not do anything to the access to Beaufort High School, not do anything to Meridian, not do anything to yeomans, not do anything to Crystal Lake Park? Or do you want to honor in its entirety the Ladies Island plan, because some people think that the only way to make it walkable through Ladies Island there is for it to be a three lane section? Jared, and Jennifer, and Brittany have done a phenomenal job. I want to make it clear, they have done a phenomenal job trying to plan and do transportation planning and transportation engineer with a lot of constraints, and a lot of people telling them what not to do and what to do many times on both sides of the equation. So, those are the options available to you. My recommendation as county administrator, if you guys want to hear me say it...
We do.
...is that you do the four lane section all the way from the Woods Memorial Bridge out through Walmart because you can make it very walkable. You all come through a four lane section on your way here, some of you, when you drive down Boundary Street. We can do the same thing over there. There's another area that you may not be familiar with in Charleston area called Coleman Boulevard with Mount Pleasant. Coleman Boulevard, just past Shem Creek, is a four lane walkable section that has a median that's landscaped. That four lane section even has on-street parking with the buildings really close to the road. It feels safe, traffic, there are no traffic problems through there, per se. There are no traffic safety issues through there, and there's no pedestrian vehicle conflicts through there. So, that's basically it. It's decision time for you all, because we can't do anything over there until this issue is resolved. So, we've given you all options.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I attended the meeting in person, thoroughly vetted every single one of those options, and the conclusion was, we shouldn't do anything with those options. We should go back to square one, which is what is being proposed now, that we handle the traffic that way. The school district will handle the traffic in the morning and in the afternoon, the way they've been doing it for umpteen years since that school district was created. And so, that would be my recommendation, that council take that particular action.
Okay, open up for discussion, Mark and then Eric.
Just go back real quick and give us the cost then on the zero option. Obviously, it's gonna cost zero. You're talking about widening that in four lanes from the bridge to...
I'll let Jared answer that one.
Yeah, so the cost is not good with the option, obviously, it's not zero. But the cost, even though it sounds like a lot less, that, hey, we already have a traffic signal there, it actually is probably going to be more. We don't really have that number yet. The option zero is kind of a more recent option priced up. The reason being is, in the three lane section that we were gonna leave it as, we didn't have to move the curb and gutter, i.e., nor the storm drainage below or the utilities. When we move the curb, we have to move the storm drainage, then we also hit utility lines, and we also have significant additional right-of-way. So, we don't have the total cost valued yet, but it will be a significant cost.
Just one more, I guess, so the public really hasn't, this is the first time we're unveiling this option zero, so the public really hasn't had a chance to even look at that, this yet, or understand what it is. What's our plan for notifying the public?
Well, and it's not necessarily that they haven't seen it, it's just a different format, because when we first looked at, we had a public meeting, town hall meeting for the access roads, and then a separate one for the major arterials. Four lanes was an option, it just got moved to the bottom because the three lanes was the preferred option. Yep, this is Jennifer.
Jennifer, good to have you with us, as always.
Thank you. So, to add on to what Jared and Eric both have said, we don't have updated cost estimates because it was, it just came up at the end of last week. The, back to your question, if the public has seen those, Jared, is correct. The original virtual meeting actually presented three different options of widening that area from Woods Memorial Bridge up to the Sam's Point intersection. All of those exhibits are actually still out on the Penny website for anybody to view. Depending upon how we come through that area in the widening, there actually could be some commercial relocations depending upon which side of the road or how the alignment is tweaked through there. So, that will add to the cost, and that's the unknown at the moment.
Thank you. York?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, first of all, I like what you're presenting. I always felt that that was probably the better, to stay on 21, even dealing with the schools and the scenarios with the various options we had. But that area is growing, and it may be a good time for us to look at completeness there. The city limit right now is at the Walmart. There is a, by Whitehall, no, Whitehall Park, that commercial area right at Meridian. So, if you look at that whole entire area and bring back a recommendation to see how it would work for us, I think that may be something I would be very supportive of. I would just tell you this, while you're looking at Walmart, can you do something with...
The parallel road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can look at that. So, the great thing about this is the timing is very good right now. You all will recall that several months ago, you authorized $25,000 on hiring a consultant to come in and do a planning charrette for Ladies Island. So, we are close to finishing and finalizing that agreement and scope of work to bring in a firm to do this. So, if we know about this now, we can go ahead and modify the plans through the charrette to talk about what it would need to look like in order to do this four lane section through this area. Again, I want to make it very clear that I think it's entirely appropriate. I've always said that it's entirely possible to make roads pedestrian-friendly and walkable with four lane sections, but the devil is in the details of how you go about designing it and planning for it, and holding the access management plan, and setting the development standards for the development along that corridor. So, it's good timing.
Paul?
Now, this Operation Zero, I assume the curbs have to be moved back on that? What about those businesses that the city of Beaufort asked to bring right up to the, almost right up to the road? Like, I'm thinking specifically about Butler Marine...
That's right.
And a couple of other ones.
So...
How's that gonna work?
It'd go back to the engineering. So, one idea and one of the alternatives earlier was that the widening would take place to the north. One was that the widening would take place to the south, and one was a shared widening. The advantage of shifting one way versus the other way, you're only moving the storm drainage and the utilities on one side of the road, but you're impacting more right-of-way. So, there, we'll look at all those different options to see whether we thread the needle to try to dodge as many businesses, but it may cost more water, sewer, and storm drainage are some option thereof.
Alice?
I really like this idea. I don't know about other council members, but my email and phone kind of blew up over the weekend. People saw this agenda, and rightly so, even before that. My daughter was in the first graduating class at Beaufort High School in 2001. When that school was put there, there was a lot of angst about Meridian Road, and I was on school improvement council and just giving you a little bit of history lesson. It was, you know, a lot of promises, not in writing, but a lot of promises were made to the neighborhood, but I think this will help with that without doing roundabouts. And of course, we don't want to impact Crystal Lake. Thank you, and Ms. Brittany and Ms. Jennifer for being the smart people you are. I think this is a good solution.
Appreciate that. Anybody online that has a comment? Okay, seeing none. I guess my sense of where we are, let me try this on you, is that what I'm hearing is people like what is being proposed as the option zero. That may take away what a lot of you are here for and being concerned about. Now, there may be another group of people who might be opposed to option zero that are not here, and Eric mentioned that there'd be the charrette. So, my sense is that what I'm hearing is council kind of likes the zero option, but it would be premature for us to vote on that today and give people that might not like that option a chance to come in. So, I hate to kick the can down the road, but it does seem to me we potentially could move this out one more meeting. Am I missing something?
No, I think that's appropriate, and I don't think we're necessarily kicking the can just by doing some further evaluation. So, if it's all right from you, I think for us as staff, it would be helpful if the direction is to move forward to explore this option zero and come back with further detail regarding costs, relocations, right-of-way acquisition, et cetera. And we can definitely do that.
Before you do that, in consideration of the large amount of people who are here tonight in the audience, no one's talked about any negatives associated with option zero. What are they?
The negatives are the right-of-way relocations, potential some business relocations, and I'm not sure about residential, but the residential, there's a segment or two right there on, near the water, but primarily is commercial, so that's the negative.
And when you're talking about the commercial or the residence, what damage is done?
Some, so there's a couple, when you're doing right-of-way, there's a couple of different damages. One, there's just your pay for the property that you affect. The second one is they have to be relocated altogether, or third is you don't relocate them, but you've damaged the way they do business, so there's the damages, more than just the value of the property itself. So, one, two, or three, and it just depends on the right-of-way need and the slopes and how that affects the property.
When will we know that?
We'll have a preliminary guess, or not guess, but a preliminary workup of that by next month.
Okay. So, a question for council, anybody disagree with that approach of having a lot more discussion next month and an opportunity for those people that would now potentially react negative to zero? My understanding is we're primarily talking about three versus four lanes and making sure that it's a walkable type of scenario.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Let me ask this, are the folks that are here relative to this issue, I don't think we need to talk about the ones that we're moving off of the table. Are there any, is anybody that wants to speak still remaining to this particular issue given this discussion, given that we have a... Tony? You know, give me, we'll take three or four, and then be done with it. Tony? I got a long list of names here, so I don't... We'll get to it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning, members of the county council, thank you for the opportunity.
You promoted us there for a minute, Tony.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm a little out of practice. So, I just want to say I'm here because of my concern about Crystal Lake. The standard principle would be access to a park, not through a park. That's a very, very important principle, and we should probably try to stay consistent with that principle. In the CIP, the Capital Improvements Program, which is part of your 2040 comprehensive plan, there's money set aside for Ladies Island improvements, $4 million, thereabouts, and $200,000 worth of improvements to Crystal Lake for park improvements. $4.2 million should not be allocated in any way, shape, or form to affect the consistency and the beauty of Crystal Lake. So, I would say that option zero... So, I would say that Option Zero is a preferred option, is better, in fact, that we build walkable neighborhoods, walkable communities, so the options that deal with the roads other than Ladies Island Drive affecting Crystal Lake is a preferable option. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, anybody else that wants to speak to Option Zero? This gentleman here first, give us your name, if you would, and be brief.
Yes, sir. Joseph Allard, and I was here to represent Crystal Lake, but actually, it's back to Option Zero. I was on the planning board at the time, back in 92, 93, so that's 28 years ago or so. And we, the county, paid for a planner to come in and give us a plan for a four-lane road down this whole stretch, and it was modeled after Abicorne Street, something like that. You know, narrower, slower traffic, and pedestrian-friendly. So, that plan is, the county has it somewhere, and it was shot down because of the politics at the time. But, it's out there.
Hope it's not covered with too much dust.
You know, I mean, I can't remember what year it was, so it's like...
Thank you, sir. There was one or two gentlemen right here.
Afternoon, I'm Chuck Newton from the Sea Island Coalition. Option Zero takes us right back to the beginning. We again refuse to make a decision, and it takes us right back to where we were in 2017. We're not doing traffic improvements for saving 2,000 cars today. We're doing it to deal with the traffic anticipated in the future. You know, right now, at the time of the Ladies Island plan, we'd calculated, there were, planning calculated, there was something, there were 4,700 platted, approved plats for homes on Ladies Island. We have 400 on Kane Island sitting there, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but there's an offer on the table by a developer from Charleston, who's offered $40,000 an acre for 214 acres in Holly Hall. So, we're looking at 5,500 new potential residences over a period of time. Going back to Plan Zero just puts us back to where we were five years ago, and really accomplishes very, very little in terms of getting traffic off the Sea Island Parkway. I did want to say one thing, you know, this, we keep hearing this thing about cutting through Crystal Lake Park. This, neither of these plans go through Crystal Lake Park. They are adjacent to Crystal Lake Park, and I think that, this, this sense that we're somehow destroying the park for roadway, I think is inappropriate. But, maybe we should rethink the Ladies Island plan. We don't seem to be committed to it. I don't know why we spent all the time and money putting it together. This is a central part of it. The goal of the Penny sales tax in 2018 was to improve the traffic conditions on Ladies Island, and we're going right back to where we were five years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back. Father, good to have you with us.
Hey. I'm Father Andrew Trapp from St. Peter's Catholic Church on Ladies Island, and just like to express our great concern about the plans that would go past the Crystal Lake and right through our property, cutting off the back portion of our property. We'd have two different, separate, so the back part of our property would become unusable for us, and it goes right next to, or possibly through, our school soccer field, which is played on by our students, as well as Holy Trinity has games there, and schools from around the county, private schools have games there. So, we wouldn't want a highway going right by where our school is and, and rendering a bunch of our property useless. And it's, it's very frustrating as well that we're one of the biggest stakeholders in these, in these plans, and we have not been reached out to officially about any of this planning. We just had to kind of find out about this kind of thing on Facebook and come to the meeting today. So, we would be very much in favor of any option that is not cutting directly through our land, and thank you.
Thank you, Father. One more, and then hopefully you can get it off.
Daniel Berryman. My wife and I own 64 Meridian, and it, we're impacted by the traffic circle on Meridian. There are seven properties that are impacted on that, on that roundabout right there that we really were thinking, there's got to be a better option. So, that's, here in Option Zero, of course, we kind of, I would say we're related if it could, anything that would move that traffic circle away from us, because it does, it, it impacts us greatly on our properties there on the water, so, so, Option Zero.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I think that probably concludes this item, and I wouldn't be surprised, and Chairman, we can talk about it, but this may, and Eric, it may, it may lend itself to a work session or something, because it gets very difficult to make a final decision at a committee meeting. We'll, we'll see. But, in any event, thank you for your interest. You're all welcome to stay, but if you've got better things to do, we'll, we'll understand. And...
I just want to, I want to make it clear for council and the committee that we can't do anything until this issue is solved.
Absolutely, I understand.
Okay? We can't do anything. And we, we get confronted over and over about not moving the 2018 Penny forward. We can't go to design, we can't spend any resources until we resolve this issue. So, you know, we, staff needs direction. I don't know what a work session is gonna do, because you're gonna hear the same thing in a work session, so...
We, we will commit to you that we will, we'll make this a very high priority, okay?
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
I, I think, Mr. Greenway, I, I agree with you, I understand what, what you, your concerns. At the same time, this is, this is maybe an opportunity, opportunity for us to, to kind of do it right by looking at a total picture and, and then moving traffic, because not only are we looking at the infrastructure, we also need to, with Jared, to, to look at traffic flow, and hopefully, this will, hopefully, take all that into consideration as we plan 21 from Woods Bridge to the Walmart. That's what I'm hoping for.
I appreciate that, but we, right now, you're not gonna make 100% of anyone happy on this issue, okay? We've laid out the best options.
And I agree with you on that, other than residents vote, commercial folks, you know...
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but the, the, moving the traffic issue through the four-lane corridor is a no-brainer. There, there's no modeling that you have to do with that. If, if the engineers, Jennifer Bragg and Jared Frelick says that if we made this four-lane section, it makes the Beaufort High Access issue go away, then I'm willing to take that to the bank, because I have confidence in their ability. We can have another meeting and tell you all that again and give you the numbers if you want us to do it, but at some point, somebody's gonna have to make a motion, so we can move this project forward, and so that we can move the other project forward that's coming up later on the same agenda. And that's all I'm saying to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to? Yeah? If you want to, sure, we, we...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am gonna make a motion, because this does need to move forward. We're gonna get some pushback no matter what we do, but this Option Zero, which hasn't been completely vetted, I don't think, we're in some potential problems with drainage, movement curbs, some businesses that the city of Beaufort asked to move too close to the front, these are all gonna have to be dealt with, whether it's moving to the other side or zigzagging, I don't know, but I think staff needs some direction to get, to move forward, so we can see if we're gonna run into anything that's insurmountable. Right now, it doesn't look like we are, but I don't know that. So, let me make a motion that we ask staff to move forward with Option Zero and keep us apprised of what they're running into, and that'll give, that'll give the public, anybody who objects to that, plenty of opportunity to come in here and tell us what their concerns are.
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and seconded, to proceed with Option Zero as described. I'll open it up for discussion of council. Okay? Everybody online? So, we're ready to vote on this. May I ask first, is there any objection to this motion? Seeing none, then Option Zero is approved for, without objection, and then that would still allow time for it to be taken up with full consideration when it gets to council, and would save a month in the, the process opposed to coming back here. So, I guess that concludes that particular item. Thank you. Okay. Good motion, Paul. Okay, let's go...
Give him a chance to go.
Yeah, we'll let everybody have a chance, they're leaving, to go ahead and go. Okay. Hello? Did he leave you?
No, no.
Okay, let's come, come back to order. And this brings us back to citizen comments. We've used up a few of the minutes, so if there's three or four people that would like to speak on a different issue, let's go ahead and take those. I've got a long list of people, so I don't know the names, but if you would like to speak, raise your hand, and I will call on you. Yes, sir. Give us your name and the subject. And it should be an item that's relative to the rest of our agenda.
Item 17. Good afternoon.
Okay.
And my name is Dave Barton. I'm on the board of the Spanish Moss Trail, and with me are Mr. Gene Regala and Mr. Steve Mix, who are also board members. And we're here to express our opposition to item 17 with regards to the Spanish Moss Trail.
Okay.
I have a brief statement from Dean Moss, the president, and the members of the board, if I can read it into the record.
You may read it into the record.
All right. Regarding the subject, item 17 of today's Public Facilities Committee meeting, Friends of the Spanish Moss...
A little closer to the microphone, just so we don't miss it, okay, sir?
The Friends of the Spanish Moss Trail respectfully disagree with this recommendation as it relates to the Spanish Moss Trail, which is effectively a scenic linear park located in the former railroad right-of-way between the town of Fort Royal and Clarendon Road in northern Beaufort County. In response to the overall lack of parks in Beaufort County, Spanish Moss Trail was developed and constructed to provide its citizens a place to experience the outdoors in a manner that provides a corridor for peaceful and healthy physical activity, such as walking, running, and bicycle riding, without having to worry about motorized vehicles quizzing by without any warning. Allowing golf carts on the Spanish Moss Trail would effectively change the usage and experience of all who use it. In addition to the philosophical differences and safety concerns, the county must also consider enforcement of regulations pertaining to motorized vehicles, as well as changes in jurisdictions along the trail, including the town of Fort Royal and the city of Beaufort. For these and surely other reasons, we must speak for the citizens of Beaufort County when we say that golf cart usage on the Spanish Moss Trail is a bad idea that should not go beyond this point.
Thank you. We appreciate Dean a great deal for what he's done, particularly leading the transportation project recently. Anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, that concludes citizen comments, and that takes us to the main agenda. And Jared, we have, I think, five or six items which are basically contract ones. You and your merry band have been kind of busy, we got 7 million to approve plus, so I'll let, I'll let you walk through these, we'll ask questions along the way, and then if there's no objection, we'll just vote on, to get all together.
Okay. This is what happens when we take a month off, so, got a lot of work going on. All right, the first one here is...
I thought that was just a typical month for you.
That's right. Well, we have some, some months are heavier than others, just because of the way things stack up, so... The first item here is a pathway award, recommendation of award for the Bluffton Parkway Pathway. So, this is a small section on Bluffton Parkway from the traffic circle eastward for about 600 feet. This is part of 2018 sales tax, one of the pathways there. We went out to bid on May 9th. On June 9th, we received only one bid from JS Construction. We made sure the bid was worthwhile and determined it was responsive, and the bid came in at We add a contingency there, 20%, bringing us to a total contract award of $245,101.32. So, with this, we would, staff recommend to award this contract to JS Construction. Just keep going.
Keep going, if you would. Any questions for Jared on this one?
All right, just stop me along the way. Second one is a recommendation award to reimagine Rebo Road master plan. So, in February '22, we contracted with Stan-Tac, who is already on our on-call traffic engineering, on-call services, to mass, to give, help develop, develop a master plan for Boundary Street from, or Rebo Road from Boundary Street to the Russell Bridge, about five and a, five and a half miles along this section. And then, the goal was to look at transportation for safety, for mobility of all uses, not just vehicular, but pedestrian, bicycle, mass transit and such, and land uses that create the, the plan and make sure everything adjacent to. What we have there is two municipalities, Beaufort County is helping coordinating, but city of Beaufort and town of Fort Royal. And the goal would be that this would be the jumping-off point. Similar to a Boundary Street, there was a master plan for Boundary Street, and it took several years for it to come to, to evolve and to come to what it became, and then from there into engineering plans, and there into a construction project on, on the 2006 sales tax. So, this project was also included on the proposed sales tax, transportation sales tax, and this is the step to help get us in that direction, regardless whether sales tax is here or not. So, the contract fee is for $270,574, with a 10% contingency giving us a total contract value of $297,631. This would be paid out of north of the broad impact fees.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Jared, why, why, why you stop at the Russell Bridge versus going a little further down Fort Royal?
Well, just as far as a logical term, and I've stopped, stopping there, I mean, we could continue it on, but at some point, we were trying to come up with a, a logical term, and I guess it's the best answer.
Yeah, you know, the traffic does, you know, have difficulty down that path, but coming in the opposite direction is also a, a traffic bottleneck there as well, so I'm just...
We were also trying to look at, trying to create a homogeneous section, because you go from one jurisdiction to another, but you're on the same segment there, so you can't really tell the difference when you're going from Fort Royal to, to the city of Beaufort, versus once you cross the bridge, you know you're 100% in Fort Royal on the, on the other side of the bridge. We can definitely take a look at that, or take a look at that at a separate study, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and the other question I have is dealing with, you know, when we, like someone just said a few minutes ago, and, and the chairman talked about the dust on some plans that we made, is this gonna be a plan that's gonna collect dust again?
No, I really hope so. My hope is that in a future year, that this would be funded as part of a sales tax project. So, what comes of this is the bones of a future project. So, that's, that's how we're moving forward with it, and our intent. Now, whether future sales tax happens or not, that's to be determined, but...
Right, and one of the things that happened with the last study that was done for the Saint, I mean, for the Ladies Island area, was that I don't, I don't know whether the consultants actually worked with the community in putting that plan together, because after we moved forward with that, we got a lot of opposition from the community saying, "I don't want it in my neighborhood." So, is that gonna be...
Yep, so, so this, it started out as a planning document, but what, we in the engineering department, we wanted to make sure it was something that could be... department, we wanted to make sure it was something that could be built. We didn't want to put around about in the middle if it didn't, if it wasn't even feasible. So, using Stantac, they're on our traffic on-call services contract, so they can do planning, but they can also do traffic. So, it's the planning component, so it has the public input, but then it has a traffic component to make sure that we're coming up with recommendations that actually can be built.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment. Town of Fort Royal, Mr. Wilson's in the audience, is also doing a study from Burger King to, to the bridge on the redevelopment of that area, and that'll be coordinated with this.
Yes, and, and I wouldn't say that they're the same thing, so that's, that's how they see their development and their, their.
Economic development.
That's right. This is more mobility and making sure whatever gets designed and their economic development fits and can actually traverse the road section.
They should mesh together, so.
All right. So, that would be a contract award to Stantac in that amount. The next one there, number 11, is a recommendation award for Airport Frontage Road Phase One project. So, this went out to bid on April 6th. This is the section of, again, Ladies Island, 2018 sales tax. This is across, on the southern side of 21, across from the airport, basically tying in at the Walmart stoplight and looping around all the way behind Taco Bell. The first phase stops at the first road, and I always forget the name, Distant Island or?
Lost Island.
Lost Island? Thank you. And then the second phase, which goes directly behind Taco Bell, would be at a later date because we've got a lot more environmental hurdles and permitings to do, and that would tie into the, what's the next road?
Little Creek.
Little Creek. Lost Island, Little Creek. You can understand why I get them confused. So, this is the first section from the signal to.
Lost Island.
Lost Island. Thank you. So, again, April 6th, we went out to bid. On this one, we received bids, one bid from APAC Atlantic. The bid came in a little over 2.4 million after review. It did appear that the bid was responsive. So, we have a 20% contingency on this as well, as part of total contract award of 2.9 million, $2,921,745, and that would be awarded to APAC Atlantic. More sales tax. Next item, number 12, this is a change order to our pathways projects for ICE. They're a current designer working on our pathways. Right now, they have a contract of $750,000 not to exceed. Out of that, they're working on the 24 pathways, but we prioritized them to 14. That 750,000 only made it through, partially through the six, the first six. We're working full design on that right now, but what this is, with the $15 million that was overcollected in the sales tax, it was put towards the additional project, or additional pathways. So, we asked for ICE to give us a full scope for the remaining work that's left on the, the original six plus the remaining eight, and it came with an additional fee of $2.2 million. So, with a 10% contingency on that, plus their current value, contract value of 750, that gives us a total contract value of 3.3 million, $230,518. And again, this gets us through the first 14 out of the 24 that we had there.
Did I miss number 10?
Did I skip one?
You skipped that.
Bless, I missed it.
No, this.
You're not the first one.
You are quite right.
It's on the 170.
Let me hit 10, and just, let me hit 10 last, if that's all right, skipping around. And I'll tell you, because I've got more to add to 10 than just actual.
Jared, before you go ahead on item number 12, maybe I misunderstood you, but I thought you said 3,300,000. The printed material we have says 3,200,000.
It is 200,000. I may have misspoke. It's 3.2 million.
Yes, sir.
All right, so the next one.
Are you on-call?
On-call. So, this one, this is an on-call transportation engineer. I mentioned earlier, we have on-call traffic engineer. Again, I've talked about traffic being signals, transportation being road design. So, we have three on-call traffic guys right now. This is for, for road design. We put this out in April, hoping to advertise and have A qualified consultants onboarded. We were very pleased with the response. We had 17 responsive submissions. Out of that, we had an evaluation team of staff, five folks on staff, looked through those and ranked those, those top eight. And the eight are AECom, Consor Engineering, HDR, ICE, Infrastructure Consultant and Engineer ICE, Mead and Hunt, SEPI, Stantac, and WSP. So, the way this would work is much the same as the traffic, that anytime we have a project, we, we assign that to the firm, and they provide us with the fee. That fee then comes back to council for award on that specific project. This would be, the funding source would be a mixed use of funds, anything that we use road projects on, so road use, impact fees, C funds, grants, sales tax projects, all the likes. The, the hope with this is that specifically whether we have a sales tax program or not, that we can more efficiently put the projects out to bid and, and get design underway as fast as possible, as well as have a, a large group of folks that are sitting there on retainer for us to pick from, so we have a large toolbox behind us. So, those would be contract awards for those eight firms listed. And I think that's, let me go back to.
10.
10. 10, so this is the recommendation of a change order on 170 on the near term. So, right now, we have a contract with AECom on the near-term improvements along SC 170. What's been asked is, there's a lot of comments received from staff and council members on two additional intersections to look at. This is almost kind of getting into what was referenced as the midterm design, but one being SC 170 and Dell Webb and Seagrass Station. So, this is actually south of the corridor that, the, the plan that we're working from, but it's in line with all the other improvements, and this is the main entrance there off of 174 Sun City. And then the second one is up to the northern end of the, of the corridor, which is SC 170 and Oldfield Way, or across from what's the future East Argent in Jasper County. So, this would be a contract add to the existing contract. AECom has a fee of $210,000 with a 20% contingency would give us a contract add of $254,000. Again, this would bring their total contract amount to $507,850. This would be paid out of impact fees, Bluffton Road impact fees as well. With this one, additional, just kind of update on 170, just everybody where we are. So, currently, we are under review with our preliminary, or with our final design on the near-term project, so basically the five intersections from 278 to Tide Watch, Cherry Point, Argent Boulevard, and SC 462, excuse me there. So, we've got those into DOT. We're waiting comments back from those guys. We expect to hear something very soon from them. We've had some coordination with them, and it's looking, looking like we're going to have those comments back here soon. Our goal is to go out to bid with the, with the design drawings this fall, with hopefully the opportunity to award to a contractor at the end of this year, so construction could get started at the first of next year. We anticipate it being about a six-month construction timeline for those first batch of improvements. So, by summer of next year, we're hopeful that we'll have some immediate relief, albeit not final relief, but immediate relief to some of the pinch points along 170. A couple of things we're working concurrently with that is, part of those improvements are improving the, the offlane off of 278 headed eastbound, or westbound, excuse me, going north on 170. So, that, that off-ramp will be improved, but the other three will not. So, we're currently working with DOT to see if they can help come up with funding to improve the, resurface the other three ramps, so we improve all four of them while we're there. And then secondly, DOT had previously had planned that the section of 278 from 170 to the Okati River, that they were going to resurface that as well. That got bumped in their funding cycle to another year, but pending recent discussion with DOT and us trying to really push them to help us out with this, they're going to look and see if they can move that back into current funding cycle, and potentially, we can stack that all together. With doing that, we have some striping improvements that we have planned on 278. If you're, if you're getting on 278, 170 going south, and you go around the loop, you have to merge into the lane, which slows down traffic, and then there's the oncoming ramp that has a free flow. So, we basically flip-flop that and give the free flow to the loop, so you don't have people slowing down above the bridge, and then the, the other on-ramp would be a merge. So, we're looking into that and hopefully can make that, that happen. And then where this, these change orders would take place is hopefully, as that project's working through, then we'd be able to finish the design, the permitting, and hopefully out to bid about the same time that first short-term project is nearing their close, so we can basically keep rolling into these near-term projects. So, I know that was a lot. I probably need a drink of water, that was a mouthful for me, but we'll gladly take any questions on any of the four or five that I just went through.
I have one question about, you said the north ramp on 170. Is that the one right before you get into the high schools? Like you're going, or, I couldn't picture that.
Back up, which?
You said improvements to the north ramp.
So, we're, we're currently doing, as far as the scope, we're, we're improving the flow underneath the bridge on 170.
Okay.
And the signal that's right there at the base of that ramp. Part of the improvements also are doing some resurfacing up that ramp back towards Hilton Head.
Oh, all right, okay.
So, that's the one ramp out of the four that we're improving as part of the 170 improvements.
I misunderstood, thank you.
The other comment I would make, just to build on this, we've had discussions in recent weeks about whether or not it would make sense to actually be investing money in designs of projects that are potentially on the horizon. The, the theory being, one, they make them more shovel-ready, and secondly, sometimes unless we're in the pipeline at both the state and the federal level, we're not as eligible for funds as we would like to be. So, well, we've agreed that that makes some sense, and we'll see this coming forward for discussion and approval when we look at a budget amendment, which probably come forward in September. And I think Jared's identified something under order of 10 million that may make sense to, to spend in that direction. Also, I think as we get more learned about these, maybe the opportunities that it, they're a true investment, and we would still can get reimbursed, and then we could use that money to invest in other ones. Also, I had discussions with a couple of the mayors who were disappointed that we put the transportation sales tax off until '24, and I described what we were doing here with this investment fund, and I, I think it really positions the transportation penny to be in a better position, because we'll be further downstream and actually get to some of these projects sooner than we otherwise would have. So, stay tuned for that, but I think that's a good one going forward. Any other comments on these items? It's items eight through 13 on your agenda, which are basically the contract awards.
Yeah, just one, Jared, when we, when we motionally move forward with 170, 462, we also talked about a relationship with Jasper and Hardyville. How's that relationship coming?
So, on, it's going really well, so on.
That's enough.
Okay.
Jasper put a million in, and Hardyville's putting half a million in.
Make the motion approve eight through 13.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Any objection? Without objections, eight through 13 are approved. Just on the odd chance that Senator Davis may join us, I will come back to number 14.
I don't think you have to worry about that.
You don't think so? Okay, well, let's go ahead.
Around the new match. She'll be all from him right now.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay.
It's coming to you right now.
Okay. So.
You're looking to see the actual ones there.
Is this, have you read it?
Huh?
Have you read it?
Yeah, I read it a little bit ago.
Oh, you got it.
In a few minutes.
Okay, well, you're a quick study.
I have not read it.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and take that up then, and let me give you my take on kind of where we are on this, and it may help focus our discussion, but we're talking about the 278 corridor, of which there is 80 million that was approved in the referendum. There's 120 million from the State Infrastructure Bank, there's on the order of 60 or 70 million from the federal government for the replacement of the one defective bridge, and I think we have 10, 15 million of impact fees that are in the project, give or take. So, the history from the county standpoint is, as this has moved forward, two years ago, we approved the money and did a study for what was called an independent review to look at the work that had been done at that point in time, and there were some good recommendations that got incorporated. We also set aside some money for a concept of having a land planner look at that, and the town of Hilton had decided to do that on their own, so they didn't draw on the funds that were approved, but there was a firm called MKSK that did the work for them, and at the end of the day, they came up with 25 recommendations, the vast majority of which, I believe, have been adopted in various phases and being included in the project. And there's now on the table to do a second independent review, but it's, it's different than the first one in the sense that what the town perceives is, rather than just looking at the section of the 278 corridor, that when you first come on the island through an area called Stony, that this would actually take a look at the whole island, if you will, and in fact, even extend out to the Moss Creek Light. So, it's kind of a comprehensive planning of the, of the whole, whole island. My sense in reading the scope and talking to people, and keeping in mind that this was first proposed roughly four months ago, this is probably a, a six-to-12-month exercise. And I should also, at this point, say, I think Senator Davis has been very helpful in, in moving this forward, suggesting some of this, and also, you know, he was responsible for really getting us the money for the State Infrastructure Bank. So, we, we need to always remember to thank him for the, the hard work that he does for us. Now, I think if you look at the potential cost overruns that we may be dealing with, I'm convinced the delegation will probably be successful in making sure we don't lose the state infrastructure money, but we're in a situation of high inflation, as we're all aware of. And if we were to delay the overall project six months, nine months, whatever, and my best guess is we're incurring extra costs by delaying the construction on the order of five, six million a month, so if we're out six, nine months, we're, we're potentially exposing ourselves to about a $50 million cost increase. Somebody could argue with those, those numbers. So, i-if you kind of think about the project and broke it into two pieces, we've got the, the piece on the bridges, which was triggered by the need to replace the one defective bridge. And to the best of my knowledge, there really aren't any open issues that we're, we're dealing with. And in fact, I think the items that were suggested by MKSK, the land planner, I believe those are being incorporated. There was a question about making the bicycle trail a little bit wider, maybe we could narrow some of the, the lanes. It was a concept of bump outs, so people could, you know, stop on the trail and be able to fish or observe, whatever it was. So, that's kind of the, the bridge section of it. If you look at the land portion, let's call it Stony for the time being, I think the, an independent review would actually be very helpful. I think there's, there's good things that would come out of it, and those things could be incorporated on the run, and I think it could be done without delaying the, the overall project. So, what's before us in a resolution is to proceed with the bridge portion of it in order to go ahead with the environmental assessment, get the finding of no adverse impact, while at the same time, the independent review could take place, and so one would not hold up the, the other. Now, as I looked at the scope of what the town is proposing, I don't see anything that would. would be lost by proceeding. So for example, they want to look at going all the way out to the Moss Creek Light. That'd be helpful, we'll see what happens. There may be some useful input about whether or not there's so many changes that would be, need to be made out in that particular area. There may be other alternatives as you come across the land portion to avoid impacting Stony. But I don't see anything that would impact, let's call it, the bridge section. So that leaves a, if we go down that path, then the question is, how do you divide the two? You've got the bridges on one hand, you've got the Stony area on the other hand. We have the area in between, which we'll call Jenkins Island for the most part. And certainly, the bridges, whatever, first of all, I would leave that to DOT and Jared to figure out what is the best place to draw that line of demarcation if we go down the path of splitting those two. But clearly, from a transportation standpoint, they would need to get through the signal area, and then those elevations and curvatures and all kinds of tapers and things that transportation engineers deal with, which would take them partway to the right. My personal sense is it'd be great to get through the causeway, because that's probably the last major environmental impact that we have, because we're widening into the water, but certainly not intrude, you know, into the Stony area. But again, I would leave that to them. So that's what's really on the table here in the sense of that resolution that we have before us, which is to proceed with the bridge portion of it. So we don't delay the project any further, which has a lot of risk, financial risk associated with us, while at the same time allowing the town to proceed with the independent review. So let me first open up, if there's a motion to that effect, the resolution will be for us, and then we'll have a discussion on it.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We're open it for discussion, and Senator Davis has sent in an email, which I have not read. It appears to include what took place at their council meeting last Tuesday, which has in it a scope of work for the independent review, a draft memo of understanding or intergovernmental agreement between the county and ourselves, which would be coming forward at some point. And as I said, I've looked at those, I don't see any conflict with what is being proposed here. So anyway, I'll open it up for discussion as to whether this is something we want to consider. This would be proceeding with the bridge portion and standing back, if you will, on the Stony portion. Eric, you look like you want to say something.
No, I'm good. I'll hold my comments for the council.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't see how you can break the two of them apart, especially in light of, wasn't the environmental assessment done considering both of them?
Yeah.
So are you going to do another environmental assessment just to address the Stony part? Because cultural resources and the gull of culture is a huge part of any environmental assessment. So I don't see how you can split them.
Yeah, you can't, we can.
You can?
Yeah, we just have to modify the current NEPA application from a congestion and a safety project just down to a safety project.
Can you go back out for public comment?
Do I now?
Can you go back out?
Well, I have to have an additional public input section, yeah, to do that.
Okay.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, just so I make sure I understand, the moving forward with the bridge, we basically counseled, established one bridge, right?
Yes, council has many times established one bridge, yes.
So this motion here basically is setting forth that one bridge?
My understanding is that the town council generally agrees with the one bridge. I mean, that's not an issue that they want to bring forward. That's my understanding.
Okay.
What we're talking about is one of the MKSK recommendations was to actually split the bridge into two pieces.
I know what you're talking about. It's still, that recommendation is in that MOU you just received.
But essentially, what it amounted to was about a $25 million cost, and certainly some safety concerns as you go through the intercoastal waterway.
Well, it would also, if you were to have a co-joined bridge, so there'd be two bridges landing on the other side of the intercoastal, that would essentially destroy Mariner's Cove. The one bridge landing allows an elevated exit on the bridge, and Mariner's Cove would be not next to the bridge, but it would essentially be off to the side under the elevated portion, assuming that's the way the exit would appear. So the one bridge option leaves Mariner's Cove intact, and a two-bridge co-joined bridge would essentially cause Mariner's Cove to be destroyed. However, I think in this proposal that the town is putting forward, there's a great deal of interest on the part of an activist group for another bridge. But that bridge is over the marsh, through the woods, to the Cross Island Parkway. And that bridge would be an alternate evacuation route, that's presumed. But that would also have a separate environmental assessment, a separate NEPA issue, and a separate Fonzie. And I don't know how much that would cost, how long it would take to get that approved and funded and built. So the one bridge option, and they may come back with that recommendation, but that doesn't mean it's going to proceed. That may just be the recommendation the end-to-end study does. But that end-to-end study also was really from '95 to Seapine Circle with the adaptive traffic signals. That'll be part of the study that they do. And the big issue is the gateway at Stony. And the question is, will they make Stony better, or will they make it bigger? Now, if the bridge, one bridge option is the one we decide upon and we proceed on it, it will come in next to Mariner's Cove, and it will join up to 278 by Windmill Harbor. And then the Windmill Harbor traffic signals will be placed in there. And then it will probably go to Jenkins Road, Jenkins Island Road. And then that'll stop. And then the Stony gateway would probably go from Jenkins Island right down to Wilborn Avenue near the schools. And that would incorporate Spanish Wells Road and Gumtree Road and Wilborn, and the entrance and exit to the Cross Island there, which is a problem in the evening if you're trying to leave. So that would be part of what they're trying to do. I don't think the one bridge option coming in at Mariner's Cove and ending, let's say, at Jenkins Island and joining 278 will have anything to do with what is eventually decided about the Stony gateway. The Stony gateway decision on how many lanes there will be, whether it's a parkway or a highway, and how that will be built out, has really nothing to do with the way the bridge comes in next to Mariner's Cove and joins up Windmill Harbor. So I think the study will be fine. I would encourage the town to have that study so that they're satisfied that they get the best possible outcome for the Stony gateway, and they get the best possible outcome for the adaptive traffic signal study from '95 right to Seapine Circle. But that, as the chairman indicated, will just add time to the study. And I think while all of that is going on, if we agree that we want the one bridge option, we can start the design phase of that bridge and not waste another, not waste any more time trying to start the process on the one bridge coming in next to Mariner's Cove, which is the preferred alternative foray. So I don't see any problem, Alice, breaking it up on the bridge.
You don't think lawsuit?
As project one and project two, and it's doing what Eric said, they're doing the extra studies.
I just have a legal question. I could see some environmental groups filing them.
Well, we had, we had a...
A lawsuit about what, though?
Because you're changing the scope.
Yeah, we, we...
You're changing, you're taking a section out to get, you're compartmentalizing it. You see what I'm saying? The Stony...
What would they challenge? The end-to-end throughput study?
Maybe, I don't know. I'm just playing what if, you know? If everyone is thinking...
We had a call last week with DOT.
And they said they could do it.
And they voiced no opposition or any concerns about doing that.
All right. Because sometimes people will get a project approved by compartmentalization. Do you see what I'm saying?
They just have to...
Peacemeal it to get around compliance.
This is a legitimate safety construction project because of the condition of the current bridges.
You said DOT is good with it? That's good enough for me.
Actually, reverse is true. I think we have more possibility of getting sued on the Stony piece.
Yeah, let me correct one thing. I don't want, I don't want something to be in the paper that I didn't say. DOT is taking direction from the county. They're not taking a position one way or the other on this issue. Because, I will state again for the record, that this is a Beaufort County project in its entirety. We can work with the town of Hilton Head, but it is our project.
Yeah, but we don't have any real disagreement with their new study on traffic, adaptive traffic signals, or to make the Stony gateway better, not necessarily bigger. I mean, it's logical for them, that's their concern, and it makes sense for them if they can, if they can get the money from the state to do the study, to go ahead and do it. Because quite frankly, as the bridge is being built, I mean, even the Stony gateway could be addressed after that was done, or while that was being done, because I don't think the alterations there are going to be that dramatic as opposed to putting in a new bridge.
Right.
I have no more questions.
And it's theoretically possible that we can sync the two projects up at the end, because the bridge construction is going to take so long, and that construction to the roadway in the Stony area is an insignificant part of the project, that it's theoretically possible that everything can mirror up and all of it be done at the same time.
Do you have anything more you could add from what's happened recently, the conversations between the town and county with regard to this project?
Yeah, I had a call today from the town, Josh Gruber, and they're very concerned about this resolution. And I understand that they're concerned. But this is just a recommendation. I committed to him that I would ask you all, that you all, if you make the recommendation to move this forward to council, that you allow me the opportunity to meet with the town manager, and Josh Gruber, and Whitney, and Jared, and myself, go meet with them to see if we can work out a path forward that everybody is comfortable with. And we do that prior to you all taking action on this on September 12.
Mark?
Actually, I like it. I've gotten some calls of people asking me to not support it after looking at it. When I came on council, we had already passed the one sales resolution. Here we are at the end of my fourth year, and we're still looking at this, and there's been no sense of urgency. I think that this committee, this council, needs to show a sense of urgency with what's happening. And I think that if we do that, we can then also ask Hilton Head to show the sense of urgency that I think that we need to get this done. We need to reform and start this process. And I think that the good decisions will be made as necessary.
Joe?
Two points. I've had discussions with Hilton Head Council, my counterpart, Mayor McCann and I talked today. And he understands our position in that. We signed an IGA. That is our promise that we are going to do certain things. Number one, we have made the promise that we're going to start the construction no later than 2024. And the promise is, we will finish it in 2028. If we do not keep to that promise, we stand to lose $120 million. That is not something that we take lightly. Number two, as our county administrator has said, this is a county project. And if you take a look at our resolution, the project as amended is not subject to municipal approval. Because, defined in the law, are three things. The term structurally deficient, functionally obsolete, and the fact that it crosses the intercoastal waterways. Because all three of those are in fact true, Hilton Head does not have to have approval to replace those bridges. And that's why we're moving forward. We no longer can afford the luxury of delaying the project because of the IGA we have in place, because of the cost overruns, and because of the times that we need to move forward. And that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Other comments?
Mr. Herbert Shaw, Mr. Herbert Shaw.
Oh, Chris?
Thank you. I've always supported the single bridge option, so I'm glad to hear that that seems like it's the path forward. Where I get concerned, though, is in two parts. Number one is when we start talking about splitting the NEPA process. And I'm also a little bit concerned, maybe I'm misunderstanding, is it possible that we move forward with the bridge now, but then the roads don't get done? Is that even a potential under this?
It is a potential, it's not likely.
Okay. We had to give it a probability, what would it be?
What would you say, Jared?
It just feels to me like if we're opening the door for nothing to happen between, say, Jenkins Island and the Cross Island, that's going to be a huge missed opportunity and potentially create more problems than what we're solving. Maybe not, depending on how big this bit of bridge is, but I think you take my point. So it's just a little bit concerning to me. And it's also concerning to me with the NEPA thing that, you know, potentially we're just going to inadvertently delay this thing.
Well, so I'm an engineer, not a weatherman, so I can't give you a probability. But the NEPA, so what we're doing, if we move forward with this action, is we're splitting the project up, and not in phases, but in separate projects. So to your point, Ms. Howard, with the NEPA process, the NEPA purpose and need right now is safety and congestion. When we do this part, we're basically removing the congestion because it may not sync up on the timeline with the road project. And we may tie a six-lane bridge back into a four-lane road section, which shortly thereafter turns into a five-lane and a six-lane at the Cross Island Parkway. And if that happens, that's, to your point, the fine line that we have to walk. We have to be comfortable that we are solving a safety problem in the bridge replacements and not necessarily a congestion problem. Should the town decide to move forward with a project of their own, that would be a separate project, not a phase of this project. And we'd have to keep that distinct and clear for the NEPA process. So they may have to go through their own separate NEPA process beyond what we're going through. Because once we move one way or the other, we would have to do some updating to our NEPA process to rebundle it back to just the bridge. However, should we not move forward with this and the town move forward, or we're able to come to some agreement in the next couple of weeks in some manner, then the NEPA process stays intact as it is. So there's pros and cons, but that's where we are. If that helps, Councilman Herbert Shaw.
This is our resolution to move forward, but as the resolution says, three groups, SC, DOT, the State Infrastructure Bank, and the Federal Highway Administration have to agree with what we want to do now. And that the proposed changes don't establish the funding for the project. But we need to do this to move this project forward if it's ever going to get built.
I guess my last comment would be, if I'm correct, that the ultimate cost is being impacted at the rate of about $1 million for every week we delay, the town study's probably going to take six months to a year. We're talking $50 million we don't have. And there's nothing lost by taking the time to let them do their project, and it still can be totally contained within the project timeline, build the bridges and tied into the construction. So, any other comments?
I've got a question, if I might.
Sure.
If this is a Beaufort County project, why do we have to allow them to do their project? I think that's the part that I'm not clear on.
What now? The question is, if this is a Beaufort County project, why do we have to allow them to have? I think the answer, Chris, is that there's a thing called municipal consent, and they have to grant it... and they have to grant it for anything that goes through their town limits.
That's right.
So pieces that can stony go through the town limits, so they have, they have a veto power over that. Whereas Joe said, they don't because we're dealing with federal highway over intercoastal on the bridges.
That's correct.
Okay, got it. That's super helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any objection to the resolution? Okay, we do have a motion, I believe, and a second. So this stands approved without objection. And there are two final comments that I would make to it. One is, it does seem to me that the section across Stony, even though it requires municipal consent from the town, is one that they might consider granting on just that section because I believe everything they've asked for from the MKS study is included. For example, having it meander to create a more of a parkway effect. And secondly, the MOU includes talking about adaptive controls. And that's where you're using, you know, state-of-the-art technology to manage on a real-time basis intersections. If you, it's been going on, the intersections on Hilton, they're actually better now than they were 10 years ago. And there's agreement on all of us to continue that process. So I actually think it lends itself to a separate MOU between the town and the county to proceed with that right away. And we don't necessarily have to include it in the, in the broader study of the whole island, but I believe that may be a good discussion.
You want to discuss on the adaptive traffic signal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everyone's in agreement to do that from 95 to Seapines. I don't think there's any disagreement.
So what I'm saying is, we, it's not a lot of reason in my mind to keep that in a study that may take six months or 12 months. Why not just get on with it? There may be a better way to do it, but that's just a thought.
Maybe speak to that a little bit. So there's kind of two components that we're hitting on the I-95 to Seapine Circle, as well as adaptive technology. So Hilton Head has a project in their CIP for this fiscal year for adaptive technologies. They're actually going out RFP right now for that. We are working along with them, as well as the MPO in this adapt and DOT. DOT has a, has a project planned to connect all the signals with their fiber to have a backbone. So all of that is kind of in work already regardless of a MOU. And then secondly, just last meeting at LATS earlier in the month, it got approved in their tip to fund a access management study all the way from I-95 to Seapine Circle. So all of that'll kind of be connected. It's already sort of set up without a MOU in place, but separate from the bridge project.
So that won't have to even be studied by the group they're going to hire because they can really just focus on the traffic congestion portion and not the adaptive traffic?
Yes.
And perhaps get it done, the adaptive quicker.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Okay, good discussion. Next item is the maintenance work on private roads. Neil, you going to tell us all about that?
Yes, sir.
Afternoon, Chairman. For you.
No controversy on this one, is there?
Might be some discussion. So before you, the private road maintenance ordinance, that was originally brought before this committee back in April. At the conclusion of that committee meeting, you asked staff to come back and revise the existing ordinance. Since then, I've met with Assistant County Administrator Foote to discuss the ordinance, in particular the evaluation of said private roads by either the fire chief within that district or an EMS representative. Mr. Foote has reviewed and agrees with the ordinance, preemptively shared a list of private roads already with me. They amount to about 25 that need immediate attention.
Okay. Let me just give a little bit of, what I kind of understand is part, part of the issue here is, I think as the legal staff has looked at it, there's some reservations about county governments doing, doing work on private roads. And secondly, I think there was discussion that got us to a point that said, if you're going to do it, probably the best measure of what needs doing would be anything that had to do with public safety as the ability of a fire truck or an EMS vehicle to get to a vehicle. So those two are kind of in conflict. So open it up for discussions. Paul didn't mean to preempt you that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'll try to be brief. This has been a longstanding issue in Beaufort County, and over the, over the years, my years, it's kind of ebbed and flowed. Sometimes it's a good idea, sometimes it's a bad idea. I understand the legal concerns that our attorneys have, and I certainly respect that. But as a practical matter, there are times, in my humble opinion, it does make a lot of sense for Beaufort County to do minimal amount of grading on roads so that they're passable. The ordinance that has been crafted here, Kurt, did you craft this?
Yes, sir.
Beautiful piece of work. There are two, two, well, one thing I do want to comment in a very positive way, I'm glad you put in funerals in there, because I don't think, I doubt very seriously there's anybody in this room or listening on TV, very many people who realize, appreciate the magnitude of the problem we have had historically on, on burials. And a lot of the cemeteries in Beaufort County are remote and difficult to access. And you, I mean, you just can't imagine the difficulty that, or the grief that a family would have to endure to try to get a, a hearse into a, into a burial area, graveyard, and the roads are so bad that they can't even get a hearse. And there have been plenty examples of that, and this covers that. Thank you for that. I do have one question about it, which I don't, maybe it's me, I don't under, the rest of it, I think is excellent. I agree with every point on it. But item number F, foxtrot, under, under item two, to aid municipalities, special purpose districts, special tax districts within Beaufort County in the construction, repair, or maintenance of roadways or other projects located within the municipal or district. I assume that means that where there's private property involved. Because the way it reads, it sounds like we're going to help them with their roads. But I don't know that that was the intent, or maybe I'm not reading it correctly. But I, I assume that this would mean that municipality has a private road that can't be accessed, let's say, and they don't have, they don't have grading equipment that we could come to their aid. That's what I assume.
They only need private.
I mean, private property within their jurisdiction that they can't get a.
Not private property, private road.
I'm sorry, private roads. Yeah, okay. Okay, that's, if that's what it means, that's what I thought. Okay, fine. Excellent, excellent work. Kurt, we'll miss your expertise and your, your, your deep understanding of the operations of county government. Thank you.
Joe?
I looked at a policy statement that prior council has, I guess it's still in effect. Do we, did we look at that policy statement in regards to this ordinance?
That policy statement, only it comes into effect if someone is bringing their road up to county standards.
Okay.
This would be an entirely different situation. So that policy statement would still be, if they want us to take over maintenance of the road, then they got to spend the money to bring the road up to county standards.
So that's.
This is a one-time public safety or a minimal number of times public safety work on private roads for ambulances, fire, police, funerals, to be able to access properties. We have a situation, a couple of situations here in the county. Bill can elaborate on this. We have one situation in particular where if there's someone that gets sick, we have to tell the family they need to bring that person out to the nearest public road because we cannot take an ambulance down that road. And that's, in, in those situations, every second might be vital.
Got you. And I will echo that, that it was well crafted. You know, all the scenarios and possibilities were dictated.
Other comments? Mark?
I am going to be probably the one objection to this. I still don't think that we should be spending public money to fix a private road. I agree that there are emergency situations that we should go out in an emergency situation and take care of things, but this is opening Pandora's box. If we're going to do this, we should have a limit on how much is spent for each item. We should have something in here that we actually then go back to the property owners, who they are, and, and make them accountable for that money, whether that's leaning their property or doing something like that, that they, when they sell their property, they pay this back. Again, I completely understand the emergency side of this, but, you know, we've already identified 25 people, roads, and here we have people calling on a regular basis complaining about county-owned roads that we can't even take care of. So again, I'm going to, I'm going to be an objection to this. And there are ways that we could look at handling this on an emergency basis, whether it's giving Eric that, that a certain amount, you know, a lateral movement to, to send folks out to spend some money. But even when I read this, it's just, you know, even crusher, rudder, gravel, pipe, materials will not be routinely provided. It doesn't say will not be provided, it says routinely provided. So what does that mean? It means that we can be using those things by fixing up other people's roads. And what I've seen a lot of times is the fact that, that a road doesn't get improved because you have property owners that share it, and no one can agree to pay for it. Does that mean the word wouldn't pay for a road, that people have more than enough money to pay for it fixed, that they refuse to do it because they, it can't go along? So again, we, there's a lot of things in this that I just felt, I don't think that we should be spending public money for private roads.
York?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate Mark's comment. One of the things in a rural community, particularly when there airs property, there's really.
York, could you pull your microphone over? Thank you.
One of the things about a rural community in Beaufort, particularly where there's a lot of heirs' property, so there really no ownership per se to a lot of these roads that you can't not really close even if you wanted to. And the, this, this ordinance right here will basically give the county administrator, public safety folks, our public works supervisor, the authority to say, we need to do something with this road just to make it accessible for emergency. There are folks who are actually living down roads that at the head road itself is owned by someone else, and they refuse to give the right of way for the county to maintain that and make it a county road. So it will always remain a private road. Even though the folks who live further down that road want to make it a private, I mean, a county road, because we cannot get all the signatures involved, they would just refuse to allow that to happen. But they are suffering because they are coming and not being able to have emergency access to those, you know, in that road. So I, I understand when you have urban areas, you have municipalities, you may have a better road system, but in the rural area, it's, it's, it's a country road. And with all this excessive rain that we have been getting here lately, I don't know whether folks can actually get in or out of their roads even to get to get food. So I think this county, we, we have the luxury. And for us to allow somebody a house to burn down, allow somebody not to get to an ambulance service because of the law itself, I, I, I think we should be ready to say to anybody who would want to challenge this here, go ahead and sue us because we're going to provide service to our people. That's what this basically does here. Minimum, not, not to a standard that the county would want before they take over a road, but just allowing the EMS, the sheriff to get down these roads, folks to, to bury their deads. Because most of the deads, I mean, cemeteries are accessible, are really actually on the water, and it's very difficult to get to there. So I support this here, and I really like to offer a motion to approve this ordinance for first reading, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Paul, seconds. Any further discussion? Joe?
To Mr. Glover's point, this is the first reading of the ordinance. If we in fact take up this, we're going to have readings in a public hearing. We can address the various things. It came to my mind that we've already anticipated there may be 25 roads that if an emergency, that doesn't mean it's happened, if an emergency were to happen on that road, we have a problem. Now we may have a means and method of addressing those roads. Maybe we go to the people who are on that road to indicate the only way we can get there is to improve this road in, for an emergency purpose, and here's how we're going to do it. That's something for us to elaborate on before we finalize this.
Okay. See, no other comments? Anybody online?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, one comment I would make.
And then Paul, go ahead.
And I agree with everyone who's said this nicely worded ordinance. So I, I appreciate that. I would just, under number two, we have the county administrator may also direct the use of public forces and resources if he slash she. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are you done, York?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was kind of bated breath. I thought we were going to just want. Well, I just want to say, we're not talking about maintaining these roads. We're just talking about the minimum amount of fix that takes to be able to get an emergency vehicle. And again, I'm going to say that Kurt, I think you nailed it. You've covered this very specific circumstances under which this can happen. It's just not a broad, whatever somebody feels like it or whatever somebody complains. There has to be very specific circumstances that have to be met, and, and the, the road has to be inspected by either the county administrator or his designee, or the fire chief, or the director of public safety. And so I think there are plenty of safeguards in here to prevent us from ever getting into a situation where we're going to, we're going to spend public money inappropriately. So that's.
One of the things that we might consider doing to Councilmember Lawson, when he said what he said, it made me think of one situation where Councilmember Lawson, Chairman Passama, and I were in a meeting with a neighborhood a few months ago that people were using a private road to access commercial businesses. So we might need to add that exception in there, that if there's a commercial use on that road, they would not be eligible for us to be doing maintenance underneath those situations. So that, you know, that will, that will help, that will help alleviate some of those concerns, but.
Let's call the question. Sarah, you want to read the role?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Chairman Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Passama?
Yes.
The motion passes. Oh, sorry, online. Councilmember Herbert Shaw?
No.
No. That's two no. The motion still passes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, and Van's been waiting a long time, is conveyance of some right of way known as 16th Street Extension. You still want it after all this time?
Yeah, this one I'm filling in for Brittany and Fatty. So Van, if I need to, I think it's pretty straightforward. But so what we have here is, we have a road or a series of roads, 16th Street Extension, that for all intents and purposes has been a, a town-owned road for a long, long time. The problem is it never got formally conveyed. So we came upon this on DIS, and it shows up as a town-owned road, a municipal-owned road. We came upon this, the town is doing some work and some drainage work, and it's a paid, county can take a look at this. As we looked into it, added a right of way to determine that it had not ever been completed. So this would be a conveyance of property of, of roads to the town of Port Royal for them to maintain at no cost, just a straight foot claim deed for them to convey these roads. Anything? Good enough summation?
Look for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we.
There you go. It's a second?
A second.
Okay, York's.
Okay, York, say it. Any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection? Hearing none, stands approved without objection. And that brings us to our last item, which golf carts on multi-use trails and paths, which these gentlemen spoke to earlier. So, who's going to, who's taking that up for the county?
I guess so.
Okay.
Kurt can help me out here. So, Councilmember Logan, kind of, come from Cunningham, asked us to evaluate whether or not it would be appropriate, and if we could provide a provision for golf carts to use multi-use paths in the county. We looked into that. There are some state regulations on certain things, but we determined that we can do that for paths that we control. So, that would be pathways along Buckwalter Road, Bluffton Parkway, and the Spanish Moss Trail, if the council is inclined to do it. They would have to meet all the other regulations that go along with using golf carts, and they would have to have a decal that we would issue, kind of like we do with the solid waste program, in order for them to be on those pathways. Pretty much in a nutshell, Kurt can ask, read details about the, about the ordinance, and we'll, we'll be glad to answer questions.
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Gas-powered golf carts, they exist, could they be included in this?
The definition of the term low-speed vehicle and golf cart does not distinguish between the propulsion method, so gas and electric would be the same.
Okay. Personally, I'm against it on the Spanish Moss Trail for a whole list of reasons that I won't go into unless someone wants to know, but...
Okay, will you exempt some of these trails? Tell them they can't use it? Do we have to open it to everything? So, you could put up, I mean, of course, you're going to enforce it, but I mean, you could put things up that indicate that those golf carts are not permitted on those trails?
Right.
Which makes sense on some of these trails.
These are the only three roads or trails in the county that would qualify under the state law. So, council can choose to name any one of the three, or all of them, or some of them?
Well, listen, I don't know what the volume of traffic is on them, but on the highly-used roads where there's people and bicycles and large crowds, doesn't make a lot of sense that motor vehicles driving down them as well. So, maybe something could be done to...
You run the rest of us off.
To eliminate the presence of, where it would create a dangerous situation. But I suppose more work would have to be done to find out what those trails are, and how do you do a census on how many people are using the trail, you know? Paul? You know, I have to say this, because to me, it's so obvious. The purpose of a trail is for people to get exercise. I mean, riding a, riding a golf cart down an exercise trail is like taking a golf cart to the gym and riding it around the gym. I mean, it makes absolutely no sense to me. But, I mean, I'm adamantly opposed to it on the Spanish Moss Trail. Some of these other areas, I don't, I'm not familiar with them, so I can't comment. But I mean, there's no way to get some guy to ride a motorized vehicle where it's supposed to be exercising.
He wanted to speak. Intended for, to apply to the Spanish Moss Trails, anyway.
So, to make sure I understand it, we have to positively approve any particular trail that they can go on, is that what we're saying?
There's only three trails total. There is the Bluffton Parkway.
Right.
There is Buckwalter Parkway, and this trail that we just discovered that it qualifies for. And I'm glad some of you kind of find it humorous, but it's already happening now in Bluffton. They're driving them down there anyways, and bicyclists, bicycles are actually on the road on Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter, in groups of 15, 20, 30 people. Those that live around Sun City see it all the time. It is a big thing in communities in Bluffton. A lot of you already get to experience that in downtown Beaufort and downtown Bluffton, Hilton Head. Golf cart living is a very, very popular thing. You guys don't have to worry about that because you have speed limits under 35 miles an hour. We don't have that luxury. But so far, the county and the municipalities have done a great job on Buckwalter and the Bluffton Parkway on putting bike paths on both sides. That's the way they've been labeled. They're a minimum four and a half feet, and they go up in some places as far as six feet wide. Obviously, there comes risk and reward with it, but it does present the opportunity for be able to take their golf carts that they're already driving to pick up their kids from school, to go to the grocery store, to go to the movie theater, a lot of restaurants. This is things that they've looked for. I've gone around my area and asked if this is something they want. I've talked to the town of Bluffton already, this is something that they do also favor. And if we took the first step, that they would even consider putting it into their new neighborhood ordinances that they approve. Sun City already does it, and they, Cracker Barrel already has golf cart parking, Food Lion already has golf cart parking, that entire complex does. This just gives the area of Buckwalter Place, you have five different schools in that location, talking about putting another school in that same location that these have access to. Multiple neighborhoods that already have access to these bike paths will be able to take them to and from these complexes. We already have Buckwalter Place, you have Washington Square that's being built, and then going down the Bluffton Parkway, you can also actually connect, get all the way down to Old Town Bluffton by golf cart using just these paths. So, that was my main idea behind it, and the decal program like we talked about as well, to make sure that we restrict that it is being monitored properly.
So, just to make sure I understand, Chris, I mean Kurt, are these, do we have to positively approve them? If we don't approve them, they're not allowed?
Yes, sir, there's an existing ordinance that this amends, that prohibits motorized vehicles on the trails.
Okay, so we have to prove each one that we would do?
Yes, sir.
Question. Do these carts have to have traffic signals, and horns, and lights, and all the...
Yes, sir.
They have a license plate?
State law requires them to be registered. They don't have to have a license plate, to my knowledge, but a registration with the state. Operators have to have a driver's license, they have to have turn signals, headlights, seat belts, and windshield wipers, if I'm understanding correctly.
That's a low-speed vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's, there's two things, you have golf carts and you have low-speed vehicles. The low-speed vehicles have all of those.
Right.
Including license plates. Golf carts don't.
Right.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that Logan did a very good job of summarizing the issue as it pertains to Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter. For those reasons, I do support this in those areas. I am very adamantly opposed to extending this to the Spanish Moss Trail. So, Alice, if you want to make a motion to that effect, I would be happy to be the second.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Pat, you said you've talked to the town of Bluffton Police, and how about the Sheriff's Department about enforcement?
I have not talked to the police department, I've talked to the town themselves, I've talked to Lisa about it, and threw the idea around, so that's something they would like to see in the area. But as for the police department, I can tell you, I live right there on that road, and you have people nodding in the audience right now, they're already driving on them, and the police department is not stopping any of that.
Well, the Sheriff's Department has been against golf cart for a while. I remember when we first passed Port Royal and the city of Beaufort, I remember the Sheriff's Department. So, I'm not comfortable making a motion, I'm against this topic.
Before you do, can I ask you another question?
I'm sorry.
Let me get Mark, and then go back to you.
I think it's a bad idea.
You know, I'll support it, but I almost think that we're making the pathways unsafe, especially we start talking about golf carts crossing over the highways, and Jared, you might talk about that, because there's, they're pedestrian crosswalks, they're not golf cart. And you'd have to redesign all those intersections to handle those golf carts crossing. I think those paths on Bluffton Parkway in my district, if they're six feet wide, a golf cart is six feet wide, you get two golf carts trying to pass each other, plus also some walking on that trail, and someone riding a bike. I mean, I think that, again, I'm for it, I know what you're trying to do, and I want to do it, but I think we're raising a safety concern, a nightmare that we're not ready to, all we need is a one golf cart to get hit crossing over an intersection, and it's all over. It's not a good idea.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Hey Kurt, are there any statutory restrictions with regard to how far you can take a golf cart from your house?
Four miles.
Two miles.
Four miles.
Four miles.
So, is that like a self-regulated odometer? I mean, it's ridiculous, I mean, you know...
Sure, it'd have to be self-reporting, I guess.
So, people, okay, so if you're, if you live in the town of Bluffton, you're not going to be driving a Buckwalter on the Bluffton Parkway, allegedly, because it's more than four miles. But you could. And then, they're going to ask you where you live, and then you'll have to measure how far it was from where your house is.
Just to allay some of the concern, I will tell you that downtown Charleston, you have to be real careful when you go down there now, because they allow golf carts to be driving on the public road in downtown Charleston. There's a lot of traffic in downtown Charleston on the weekends, so I don't know that it's that big of a safety. I have my own safety concerns about golf carts and people riding on golf carts without seat belts and things like that on public roads, but that's a decision that somebody else needs to regulate. So, I'm not really sure that the safety concern is really something I'd be all that concerned about.
They have to have golf carts, please.
Yeah.
I think it's safer with golf carts travel with traffic.
Really?
Golf carts try to cross a road, and you get two-lane, people come up both four-way, four-lane, four-way...
I would think it would be safer for them to be with pedestrians and bikes, because cars don't see them. Yeah, yeah.
Curbs aren't set up for golf carts moving over the curve.
Oh, I got, I see what you're saying. I got you.
We can tell horror stories about Sun City golf carts going across 170 at various places, the Del Webb Boulevard to get over to the other side, at Seagrass Station, that's tough. Currently, on the Bluffton Parkway, they're putting the path as you go from the developments all the way to the end to the Buckwalter Parkway. If, if this is approved, they're going to have to widen that, because right now, it's maybe four feet wide at the most?
It has to be a minimum of four feet, based by our regulations at the county, and that's what considers it a multitrail and not a sidewalk.
So, I think the question that's on the table is...
I'll make the motion, but I'll also make the motion to remove the trail as well, because it's more about the connectivity in Bluffton to get to all those complexes.
So, basically, I think the motion has to say we want to approve it specifically for the two that you're talking about. We don't have to say anything about Spanish Moss Trail, because it's not allowed now anyway. That's my read.
Well, it's in this ordinance, so you'd have to...
No, we'd have to amend it.
Yeah, you just, all you have to do as part of the motion is say, we make a motion to approve this ordinance for Buckwalter and Bluffton Parkway.
Yeah, the first reading of it.
Yeah.
You just got to go through it.
And we'll take, we'll take the Spanish Moss Trail out before it goes to council for a reading.
So, I'll make the motion to approve this ordinance for Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion newly seconded, is there any other discussion? You want to second it?
No, no, I want you to do it.
You did, okay. Is there any objection, such that we need to have a roll call? I don't see any objection, so this is approved without objection to modify the ordinance for the two designated roads, and move forward to council for a lively debate. Hopefully not. Okay. Having concluded all the work that we had before us, we stand adjourned.